Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order for the Town Hall Saber zoning commission for a special meeting. Agenda and a hybrid meeting for Monday, October sixteenth at sixteen PM, Town Hall first floor conference room. Um, at a roll call, uh, myself, Mark Eldorrello, Chair, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, Robert Freeman on Zoom, uh, Emery Thorsten and, uh, Mark DeMonaco, the regular commissioners, alternate here are Justin Terrible, John Henry and Brenda Dyson. Um, move into our presentation on affordable housing in Old Sabre. Discuss the town's responsibility after approving affordable housing applications, rent calculations, and how affordable housing works in Old Sabre. Maria DiMarco, President of Operations at DiMarco Management Company, and Sherry Gardner, Vice President of Operations, DiMarco Management Corporation. Maria?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So glad to be here. And I wanna say that frankly, I don't know if you all know this, but I'm an Old Sabre president. So I'm very proud of the town because you guys are doing this right. And I work in many, many towns. We do, I don't know how many, eight thirty G, you know, review. But it's all over. And you're really ahead of the curve. So I appreciate that, you know, so. And I think you ought to be proud of yourselves because you are very proactive. But anyway, you all understand the program, what it's about. So what we do, what we have found, uh, is that most of the towns and the zoning officers and the zoning boards don't understand this program or don't know how to handle the details of the program. So they get very skeptical and they don't really like to handle it. So in that regard, what you all have done is hybrid people that do that, right? So our company manages property all over the state of Connecticut, and we primarily do projects that have special components such as ferry crossing. I don't know if you know ferry crossing in Old Sabre. That is an affordable housing complex, and there is a number of different types. That one is Department of Housing?
That one is DSS affordable with CHAPA and a smaller area of DOH, yes, and home funds.
So all of these programs have different requirements and have different ways that we certify that you're in compliance, right? And eight thirty G is one of those, and it's just kind of a unique program. And after you approve it, in Old Sabre, you've approved a number of them. And you've approved two types. You've approved the standard eight thirty G, which is in the STEP. And then you did an overlay zone, the housing investment zone, which is just a minor deviation of an eight thirty G.
Incentive housing.
Incentive housing. And, um, that has just a little bit different calculations. So what these programs require, and actually put it on the towns to do, is to make sure that the housing is, once it's built, that it is managed, rented, or sold to people that qualify and for the actual figures that make it compliant with the affordability formula. So if you wanna go, I don't, I think you've gotten the handouts for us. That affordability formula changes year to year because it has a number of things that go into it. And one of the things that go into it is, well, one of the things that changes every year are the income limits. So those are published by Housing and Urban Development HUD, right? And they're usually published in February, but sometimes we don't get them till April. And typically, they go up every year. But I've seen years where they've been flat, right? So every year, those changes and that, those figures actually go into the formulas. So that shows you where you are. In the eight thirty G world, when we calculate who are the people that qualify to go into this housing? It is normally people that are within the income limits. So when you look at your income limits, for example, on the first page, it'll give you what the statewide limits are. So for 2023, the statewide is one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred. That's the area, that's the state's median income.
It's household income?
Yes. And for Old Sabre, you're much higher than that. You're one forty-five, three hundred. So the eight thirty G statute says that you must use the lesser of. So you can't have people that make more than one nineteen, whatever the state, I can't.
If I could just interject, so the statewide limit, but then there's also an adjustment based on the number of people in the household. So on this cover sheet, you have, um, for each of the programs here, I broke it down for the incentive housing district as well as the eight thirty G. And you could see the difference for your particular set of sides. And it's adjusted based on the number of persons in each household. And that's an annual income for that particular household for initial occupancy to determine that they're eligible for the housing program. And if it's a rental community, their income, household income, has to also be recertified on an annual basis during your entire affordability period. So if there's a forty-year affordability period attached to that particular development, those units that have been designated as affordable, that how everyone, anyone that rents that household is subject to this recertification at initial eligibility when they move in to sign a lease and at end of recertification when they renew their lease to make sure that they still qualify for this particular program.
Yeah, and the reason we spelled it out with the number of persons in the household is because when they come up with the median income, they base it on some weird formula that consists of four point something people in a household. That's what they use. But we, you know, we have to further break the town because like what Sherry said is when we go to qualify a household for a particular unit, we actually look at the number of people in that unit, okay?
And the income is total or?
For the household.
If there's two, uh, wage earners?
Correct. It's the total household income. So you could have a single mom with three kids and it's gonna probably be one income, right? But if you have two working people, et cetera, yeah. So that is one of the things. And then if you go on the next page, it goes through the calculations. So what we have to do, again, annually, is figure out what a particular project, if it has the set aside, what it can rent for, okay? So if you build an apartment complex and you have units that are deemed affordable every year, you have to go through this formula, and we say, this is the maximum rent that you can rent this unit for. I don't know if you wanna go into more detail about how we actually get to that.
Um, yeah, so the sample calculation in your packet, you have, um, two samples. One is for the incentive housing and the other one is for the eight thirty G because again, they have, um, a slight deviation as far as the figures that are used. But the calculation method itself, they do marry each other. Um, the only other factor that is, um, calculated into our maximum rent calculation is also what's called the utility allowance. And that schedule is also published by the state of Connecticut. We pull that right from the Department of Housing. And utility allowance is a, um, of the tenant-paid utility. So if a resident, if a lease says that a resident is responsible for their heat, their hot water, their electric cooking, general electric, then there is an actual schedule that we pull those figures from. So you know that we're just not pulling it out of the clear blue sky. Um, and that's also factored into your maximum rent calculation. Um, basically with the affordability program, the way that it's structured is so that way a household is not paying more than thirty percent of their household income towards living expenses. And that's what's factored into the calculation. So that amount also may change from year to year. And it'll also change from development to development because of the way that the utility structure is set up, with tenant pay versus owner pay.
Okay, so that talks about the, doing the rentals, right? And then we also have a few projects where there's sales, right? So they, uh, developer will build a project and they'll have ten condominiums and they'll set aside two to be affordable. And we have to, again, do the same calculation, but it's for the sale price, right? So we determine what they can sell that unit for. And then we also determine if the buyer that wants to buy, the potential buyer for that unit qualifies to buy that unit. So we just recently did one. The sales don't happen that often. Like Sherry said, in the rental, we have to do it annually. Or the, whoever the management agent is for that project should be doing this annually. Do they? I don't know. I, I can tell you that we do. And I think Old Sabre is trying to make sure that your developers that have built affordable housing are doing this annually as they should. On the sales, you have to do it upon the sale. So if you, I just did one. Do you remember Ethan's Landing? It's on Spencer Plain Road. It's a lovely, small development, and it's half in Westbrook and half of it is in Old Sabre, and it's the same development. And we just had our first resale from the original, uh, the original occupancy, which I think was what, ten years ago, maybe? Yeah, about ten years ago. And we just did the whole calculation, and actually, the price for this unit went down. And the reason it went down, uh, was because the interest rates went up severely, as you all know, right? So when the interest rates, and there, that's another calculation that's done. I don't know. Did you do a sale?
Sale one, no.
Yeah. Well, in the sales calculation, all of those factors are weighed in. Uh, the taxes, are there HOA fees, are what the utilities are, um, any other factors that affect the, the common area charges for that particular unit? Those are all factored in, and the interest rates. And recently, I've had developers say to me and Sherry, not in, uh, not in this area, but they say, because the interest rates are one of the biggest factors in making the sales pricey to go up or down. So we've had developers say to us, well, I don't want you to use, you know, a six point five percent interest rate because that makes the price I can sell this unit for much lower. And again, we revert to what the state of Connecticut says. So we go to the Department of Housing. They tell us what we must use, okay? So we don't, just like utility allowances, we don't make it up. We don't make up the interest rate. They tell us what the interest rate is. So even if that person can, if the developer says, well, no, I'll give, I'll give you a mortgage at two percent, which is unlikely, but if they said that, it doesn't matter. I have to use in my calculation what the state of Connecticut says we must do. So then we set the sales price, and that's what it has to sell for. It can sell for less, but you never can exceed it. And, uh, so this particular one, I remember, I think when the, the woman, she's deceased. The woman that originally bought it paid, I think, one hundred and sixty about ten years ago. And now it's gonna sell for less than one hundred and twenty. And that's because the interest rate difference and the taxes went up and, you know, the common area fees. So all of that goes into those calculations. And then, um, then when the buyers come to us, and this is where it gets a little complicated, and I understand why developers and property managers don't wanna do it. But once you come to us with, let's just take rentals, for example. You have a, a family that wants to rent your unit, and you're, you're saying that the rent normally goes, it, the market units are going for three thousand. But because this unit is restricted, it's gonna go for eighteen hundred a month instead of three thousand. Makes it a big difference, right? So then what we have to do is we have to look at the household income and say, we have to what we call third-party verify. So in this day and age, you know that documents can be forged. You can make a copy of anything on the internet and present it and say, here's my tax return. And you can show that you are within the income limits. So what we have to do is we actually have to get it from the source. So what do we ask for? Six weeks?
We asked for four to six, we're six weeks worth of face jobs. We asked for six months' worth of bank statements, um, savings accounts. So all, all assets are also verified. The, um, statements and the six months' worth are critical because it shows potential sources of income. Nowadays, um, you know, between Cash App and Zelle and Uber and DoorDash, those are all sources of income. Cash App is, uh, actually could be considered sources of income. So we go through all those steps to, to verify. And those standards are also established by HUD, so that's why we follow them to a T. HUD actually outlines for us in their guidebook, um, what are, um, verifiable sources of income. And not only is it for the head of household. If a household has an adult child living with them over the age of eighteen and they're not a full-time student, their income has to be counted as well. Especially in the rentals because they're over the age of eighteen, they're gonna be signed that lease. So that's why their income is counted.
And that has to be done every year, at renewal of the lease. So you can imagine it's a lot of work because, yeah, you have to go out and get the, the statements from the bank. You have to request the, the stuff from their employer. You have to go to the IRS if they're self-employed. You have to get all of that, and it, it takes two to three weeks to gather all that information. And people don't like to give that. You can imagine how invasive it is, right? And so, you know, people are like, really? You need every single one of my statements? Yes, and we need every page, and we go through it very carefully, and we have to ask questions. So if you start seeing, you know, a hundred and fifty dollar cash deposits every night, you know that something else is going on. Either they're selling something, delivering meals, doing whatever. So we have to check all of that. But then, once we verify that, then that's good for a year, and they can rent the unit. And we just, we just keep track of all of that. And it's very similar across, across all the affordable housing programs. This type of verification happens, right? So if you live in housing that's subsidized by the state of Connecticut, if it's subsidized by Section Eight vouchers, if it's subsidized by low-income housing tax credit, whatever it is, this process, although some of the things might be a little different, but this is standard. Anytime you restrict housing and you make it of, under the affordable category, there are verifications, and they should be followed because this is what you did it for. You did it to help certain people that are income-qualified. If you start, you know, it's like, we have people that build units and say, well, I wanna put my son in, you know, one of those units. And we're like, well, okay, does he qualify? Well, no, he's got a good job, but why? He's my kid. I built the, you know, I built the complex. I'll put. You can't do that. That, that really disqualifies you. So we have to watch all of those things. And in your particular case, so we, we normally do this because we're managing the property. In the case of Old Sabre, we did an audit. We don't manage, we only did the one project.
I'm sure that.
We did one project, but it was sales, right? So when it was first sold, we qualified people. When they bought it, we won't qualify anybody again until they go to sell it. When they go to sell it, there's a deed restriction, and usually the attorneys figure this out during title search. Then they call us, and we tell them, this is what you can sell it for. And when you find a buyer, these are the income limits. So we give them this sheet, and we say, okay, if it's, you're selling it to three people and it's a sixty percent unit, they can't make over seventy-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And they send us the information, we verify it, and we say, you can go ahead and move forward with the sale. So that happens very rarely. Like I said, the sales don't happen all that often. Uh, the rentals are different. They're annual. But in Old Sabre, we've only done that one project, and there hasn't been any resales at all there. But what happened is Chris called us and said, hey, we'd like to do an audit. We wanna make sure we've now have four or five, eight thirty Gs?
Four or five.
Yeah. And she said, you know, we have them, we've built them, they, they seem to be operating well, but we're not a hundred percent sure that they're operating within the constraints of the law, right? That statute. And she said, can you take a look and do the audit? And so that's what we're doing for Old Sabre. Okay, so we didn't initially qualify people. We are not doing the annual recertifications. We just did an audit, and we can go over that audit later on with you. But that's basically how it is. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, different little details and, you know, the difference between a sixty percent and an eighty percent unit, that's just the set-aside limit. The sixty percent obviously is lower because you're reaching, you're trying to target people that fall at sixty percent of the area median income and eighty percent. Sometimes, like in Fairfield County, they will, some of these programs will allow you to go to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And they do that because even that makes it affordable, going to a hundred and twenty percent, right? So if you're looking at Fairfield County, there's some areas where an efficiency unit could rent for forty-eight hundred dollars a month. Yeah. And by doing the set-aside, then you can reduce that somewhat. So that's basically how the program works.
Well, the one reason, or one of the thoughts with having Maria come is that we permit affordable housing developments. But we really don't know how much do they rent for. So it's a little bit tricky because we can't put everybody's rent on a piece of paper and circulate it around the room with their name and their unit number. So the thought was we could kind of get a good feel as to what these units, you know, how much. And I forgot, do you have the at-rate unit amount you gave me? I have them upstairs.
It's the market units at.
Yeah, station.
Uh, St. Old Sabre's station.
Old Sabre Station, I think you said was a little bit fun.
It is twenty-three ninety-two for a one-bedroom, and it was thirty-four sixty-two for a two-bedroom, and it did not include utilities. The other thing I found out, which was kind of new to me, because I don't do market rate units. All of our units are these special categories, senior, elder. They're, they all have special programs that make them affordable. We set a figure for the year, and that's what we rent it for. So if it's being rented for twelve hundred a month, that's our, what we rent it for the whole year. What I found out is in that, in these other units, they have a service that they use that adjusts their rent daily. And I was shocked. It was kind of like the stock market. I said, you mean to tell me if I call you on Friday and your rent on Fridays, thirty-four hundred and twenty dollars for a, a two-bedroom, if I call on Monday, it could be different? She said, absolutely. It changes the rent daily. I was shocked at those rent figures, to, to be honest, because we, like I said, we don't do market rate housing that often. And I asked, what's, what's your vacancy rate? They have one vacant unit, one. So that tells me that there's a huge demand and that people, you know, by and large, those units are on market rate. There's only thirty-nine, thirty-nine that are set aside. So the other hundred and fifty are on market rate, and they're all rented. All rented, and they get, they get inquiries every single day. So.
Well, when you say there's a variable rate for the rental, do you mean that if you call on Monday and you reach an agreement, that's gonna be the rent for a year?
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't change every day?
It doesn't, no, no.
Okay.
You get whatever, if you sign the lease, you sign the lease on Wednesday. Right, yeah, right, right. No, but they quote you different prices. So I said, if somebody's shopping on a Friday, and then Monday, they, and she said, we hold the rate for seventy-two hours. Right? I, I thought, what a racket.
I know.
Pretty scary.
Right, so we can look at the same unit a day apart, and it could be several hundred dollars difference.
And there's no vacancies. That, that's what shocked me, and I'm like, you, she said, yes. And I forgot what the name of the software, the, the program that they use. But like I said, I was shocked because we set our rents. As a matter of fact, most of our agencies that we work with, like Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and HUD, they tell us, you can't raise rents more than X. Like this year, CHFA said, you can't raise rents more than four point two percent. Period. So we can't raise rents more than that. In the market rate world, they've raised rents twenty percent, thirty percent, you know, so they can pretty much do what they want. So it's so valuable to have these units because I don't know how people do this. I do not know how they do this. When you're renting a two-bedroom for almost thirty-five hundred dollars a month plus utilities, what to, you know, how much do you have to earn to, to be able to afford that, right? So this is why the need for affordable housing is so vast. And our wait lists are years long, years. Our senior housing, years, years.
I have another question. On your sample calculation only, the second page.
Which one? The IHG or the IHZ?
Eight thirty G, this one, second page. You have at the bottom, if you have actual utility CEOs.
Costs, I'm sorry to.
Did it get cut off?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Otherwise, utility, well, okay, thank you.
So what we've done at a number of our properties, especially our properties that have the HUD overlay, we're able to do, if we feel that the utility allowance is an injustice to our rents, we can do a utility, um, analysis. And what that consists of, if it's a rental property of twelve units or if it's a rental property of a hundred units with tenant-paid utilities, we have to collect all the utility bills from all the residents and do, and, and do our own calculation to see what the average cost is if we want to try to dispute or get either a lower or higher utility allowance. So that's what that, so some developers would, you know, especially on our homeownership side, um, they'll say, instead of using just a snapshot of what the state feels is an average statewide, they'll, um, collect and provide us with actual utility costs for that particular property so we can get a true value in there.
Especially if they've added energy efficiency features. So we're having a lot of developers that are doing geothermal, solar panels, this, that, you know, to reduce the utility costs, then we can collect that and use that. But it has to be real, you know, they can't just say, oh, the utilities in my buildings are X because I put in extra insulation. We have to really see it.
So what do you do with a new construction then, if there is no history?
We get estimates. They can provide estimates. So usually, the engineers do that for us. So if it's geothermal or if it's solar, you know, all of those things, they can calculate that for us.
Yeah, and within our portfolio, what we do is try to match it up to the most similar property, similar size, square footage, utility sources that has been online for, you know, for a couple of years, and we're able to pull actual expenses for them to use as a comparison.
Any questions?
I have questions. Well, I have questions I know the answers to, but I found when I asked the questions that they were kind of interesting. So what happens when someone, uh, has a house and it's an affordable unit and they improve it?
Uh, doesn't matter. I mean, and this has happened quite a bit. Uh, we make people sign, when we are in charge of doing the representation for that particular project, we make the potential buyer sign a document that says they understand the program. Because in the past, we have had people buy a unit, for example, a hundred and thirty thousand. They live in it for three months, and then they decide, gee, I would really like to upgrade. I wanna add a garage, and I'd like to do a fenced-in yard, and I wanna do all of these things. And then this is a true case, and then they get deployed. And now they have to leave. So they've been in this house nine months. They paid a hundred and thirty. They've put thirty more into it. And they've come to me and they said, well, how much can I sell the house for? I said, you can sell the house for a hundred and thirty. But what about all the improvements? I said, the next owner will appreciate those, but you can't make your money back. So you can, and I've had people say to me, but I put in all-new faucets, and I did this, and I did that. I said, and I hope you enjoyed it. This is what is meant by keeping it affordable. You can do those things, and you can, you know, if you stay there a long time, you might, you know, pricing might change because it does change year to year. But to expect to make that money back, that's not how it works. It's not, that's not the program that is, so.
Is that disclosed at?
Absolutely, that's why, that's why I make them sign that document.
We actually have an eight thirty G disloyal trade acknowledgement. Um, and then the other thing too with the, um, homeownership side is that the house that's purchased has to be your primary residence. So someone cannot purchase a home under the eight thirty G program and then use it as a rental, as a rental property, you know, a year later, six months later. That has to be, and there's a affidavit acknowledging that in our package as well.
And then people will ask me, well, what if, like in this particular case I just told you about in Westbrook, where the, the first, the original. first, the original voter passed away. They ask, can I deed it? Can I leave it to my children, right? And you absolutely can. But if they make over income, they can't live there. And if they want to rent it, they have to rent it to somebody that falls within the rental guideline, you know, the, the income guidelines. So that's why this particular person, this estate is selling it because the children exceed the income limits. And they don't want to be bothered going through this rental with qualifying people and all of that. So it, it's very restrictive, but for good, good reason. When you gave them a break upfront and you told them, we want you to keep it affordable for forty years. So, you know, at the end of forty years, you can do whatever you want. So if you bought it on a hundred and, a hundred thousand and you've lived there forty years, God willing, and you can sell it for five hundred, go ahead. If that's what the market is for the rest of the units, you, you know, you get a big payday, but otherwise you don't.
And then one thing too, um, to keep in mind as well as part of the, the developer's concern. When they put in, when they apply here at the town to make their, uh, properties affordable, if they have a market unit A and affordable unit B, they have to be exactly the same. They can't, you know, they're comparable. So they can't put all top-notch in A and then give bare minimal in B, in B.
Right.
So you have to be, you know, delivering a similar product.
Because we get asked that a lot by developers. Well, what if I put only stainless, you know, appliances in this one and then that could be an upgrade on the affordable? You can't do that. If you're going to offer granite counters, you're going to offer granite counters, yeah.
How do you verify if someone was qualified, signed, is in it, and in six months they rented it to somebody else? How does that get disclosed?
You know what, if they, we haven't run across cases like that because we wouldn't necessarily, you know, find out. But if they list it, we find out.
So they list it with online or something?
Correct, correct. It gets, yeah, yeah. The realtors, yeah, they, they do, they do get to us and let us know that information. And I do have a zoning officer in, uh, another town that is amazing. She trolls the internet to make sure that her affordable units aren't being sold or rented from more, and it is not this town. But, um, she really does. And she'll call us and she'll say, did you know so-and-so's, you know, unit has been listed for sale? Did you guys approve that? And we have found that on a couple of instances, they didn't come to us. They went straight to the realtors. And that's the other thing that's kind of problematic or makes it difficult, is that realtors don't understand this program. Right? So it's very difficult. They think, hey, look, I'm getting this great house to sell at this great low price and it'll be a fast and easy deal. You know, I can sell it very quickly, but then they don't understand what, what it is, you know, and and then they get stuck. And if they take the listing and they don't do all the right things, it, it becomes problematic. And your, when you approve it, you give the applicants an affordability plan. And in that plan, it's usually twenty, thirty-page document. It lists everything that they must do, right? And one of the things that they have to do, it's called the affirmative fair housing marketing plan. And basically what that says is that you have to make people that don't normally live or work in your area know that there's an opportunity. So that everybody in the surrounding area understands that there's this new development or there's this housing that's going for sale. So you have to do what's called outreach and you have to do it outside of your town. Because a lot of people think, well, we're going to build this, it's just going to be for our residents, right? And we're always kicking people saying, you can't say that. You can't, you know, you can't say this is all for only Old Saybrook residents. It's not. And you have to do, you have to go out to the greater community and let them know about this opportunity. And we do that.
I got a question. Uh, the Old Civic Zoning Commission is responsible for the approval of an affordable housing development. And it must have an affordable, a housing plan as part of the approval process, as you just mentioned. After the approval and construction and occupancy and it's, it's up and running and full, let's say, what happens then? What, what, we created it, we just threw it over the fence to you, you know?
Well, it depends, you know, sometime, I've asked, I've asked the people at the Department of Housing that oversee this. And basically they said, it's up to the zoning. It's up to each individual community zoning officer commission to decide how they want to monitor it. And if they monitor it. And that's where I think it runs into a little bit of a, a snag and why some towns shy away from this. There are towns that really don't want to even consider eight-thirty-G because it's kind of a handful to manage, right? And I've also asked, if you find that there's problems, what are the enforcement provisions? I mean, we have them in all our other housing. For example, if, um, in HUD housing, if we find out that someone is over income, they didn't report their income, they lied, they did whatever, there are repercussions and there are steps that we can take. We can have, they can lose their voucher. They can lose, you know, their housing stability. They can lose a lot of things. In this program, there's no set rules about what are the punishments, if you will? What are the enforcement that you can do? And again, they leave it up to the zoning offices to decide if they in fact even monitor it. So you know. So that's a good question. But yeah, nobody, it's up to you guys. And I think that's why you guys did the audit, to, to make sure that in your town people are doing what they said they were going to do.
So can you talk a little bit about, sorry Bob?
Okay.
Oh, so can you talk a little bit about what happens when someone moves into an affordable unit? And then they do very well. What happens when they go for their one-year review and now they, they no longer qualify?
They have to pay market rent. At that point, they, they have the option of one, moving out. Two, going to market rent. And then what happens if that unit is no longer the affordable unit? The next available unit must become affordable. So if you have a person that hit the lottery but still wants to live in that unit because they love it, that's fine, but you can't continue to live there and pay that low rent. You're going to have to go to the market rent or move. Yeah.
But then they have to provide another unit.
Yes, if, correct, correct.
The next, yeah.
Correct. Could be years down the road. And what if the, the person that just struck it rich is in a one-bedroom and the next available is a two? Yeah. So, you know, you have to look at all of those things.
But if, so like an eight-thirty-G is, is deeded for a certain number of units, right?
On the sales, yeah.
Right. So if it's, let's just pick a number of twenty, all right? And this situation happens and it's down to nineteen, isn't that in violation?
Well, for, for sales, we don't care.
No, but I'm talking about rent.
Oh, rent, okay.
Isn't that, but aren't they in violation at that point?
Not really, because you don't want to make people homeless. So you can't really force an, if that individual that's in there and now their income has exceeded, the product is not in compliance technically, but what are you going to do? If the person doesn't want to leave, you can't EBIT them. So.
But you've reduced the number of affordable units.
You have. So what you need to, if they have another unit, that the next available unit must become. But if they don't have one, they, you know, what can they do? They can't go build another unit immediately or add on to it. So you, you just, it's kind of wait.
The safeguard that the developer has, that the owner has, that they should have in their, um, lease documents, particular verbiage in their lease, they should have an affordable lease addendum that spells out the what ifs. So, and you know, and what the, um, what the recourse would be or what their options would be at lease renewal. Um, I've seen some developers where they would have in their lease documents itself um, of, of, of layover time. That, you know, after your one-year mark of your over income, we can hold you in this affordable unit up to so many months. And then if another unit doesn't become available, um, they'll give them renewal options. Either they'll renew on a month-to-month basis, they'll renew on a six-month basis, or they won't, or they won't renew them and they'll, they'll have to move out. So that's the protector for the, for the landlord himself to have that, to have those guidelines clearly spelled out in your documents.
But it could put them at a significant disadvantage of the, not a light unit comes available, but one that's larger potentially could generate more income. It can, if it's a one-bedroom and person hit the lottery and stays there, the next available one-bedroom, you can't switch it to a two-bedroom.
I mean, if the developer wants to do that, but why would they?
But if, if the next available unit is a three-bedroom?
Yeah.
Is that the one that then has to become affordable? Or is it the next?
It's the next one, the next one bedroom.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. If the developer was to agree that they would make this thing, exactly, why would they? That rare.
Yeah, but that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, in, in an ideal world, the affordable units are approved and at, at some, somewhere, somehow, there's a, a spreadsheet that shows how many affordable units have been approved in the state of Connecticut. And my question is how of, of those designated affordable units, apparently some of them are not being occupied by qualified people. And what's the impact on that total statewide number? Is it two percent or what, what's the percentage of approved affordable housing units that are not operating properly as affordable?
I don't think anybody has the answer to that question because there hasn't been a statewide audit of all the affordable units approved under an eight-thirty-G. On other programs like low-income housing tax credit, we would have that report. On the HUD Section Eight, we would have that report. On the Department of Housing, elderly and disabled, the DSS units, we would have that information because those are all governed by particular agencies. But when you have units that are governed by each individual town and each individual zoning commission, there's no standardized report. There's no, there's no criteria, Chris, as far as I know, for you to even report this anywhere to the state.
This just came up as in a discussion. It's, you know, how much is an affordable unit at X development? I mean, until we did this, we really, I didn't know. You know, so it, it's something, you know, we, we approve units, we give relief to the regulations for a good purpose. So are we approving things that are actually operating within the approval? It's, it's important, especially with what we have going on with rents at thirty-eight-hundred and some of the numbers, which I saw a little bit of the draft numbers, I was somewhat shocked that how low some of the incomes were and how high the rents were. Looking at it and saying, how do they afford groceries? You know, uh, it's, it's staggering.
Yep.
So if it's, so if it's true that there are some affordable units that should be affordable but are not affordable, then Connecticut could increase the number of affordable housing units within a short time period simply by enforcing the affordability clause.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks. Somebody ought to get to work on that.
I know. But it's a lot of work and I don't know, like I said, because they don't have a requirement to do any kind of annual reporting by each of the communities that has approved these, who's going to do it? You guys did it, you, you paid me to do it, right? Not a lot of towns are willing to do that. They don't have the funds to do that nor the interest to do that. So you know, you guys are very proactive, which is great. I mean, and there's, like Sherry said, we do twelve, thirteen different towns. And there's probably, I'd say a handful that are really in tune with what the program is meant to do, the specifics of the program and wanting to enforce it to do the right thing. The others are doing it because you know, they were forced to do it or it makes, you know, they had an empty lot that could be turned into housing, but they don't know, you know, they don't know what's going on.
So in the towns where DeMarco's, the, um, compliance, the administrator of the, of the affordability program for particular developments, we actually send to the town on an annual basis, our compliance report where we, where retail the town on an annual basis. This is how many properties were sold. This is what we verified. These were the maximum sales or the maximum rents. These were the income limits, kind of similar to this audit review. We send a report and we are, um, we're certifying as the administrator on the account that we have, you know, verified and that all these helps us are contained compliance.
Now, what you can do, what municipalities can do is when a developer presents a project that they want approved under eight-thirty-G, you can tell them you must use a qualified administrator. And you can require annual reports. So for the ones that we do, that's what happened. The towns said, you must, we don't know how to run this program. So you have to hire a qualified administrator and we will get annual reports from the administrator. So that's how some towns have dealt with it.
I think that's something for us to think about.
And it's checking your, in the affordability plan as well, because I know on the eight-thirty-G side, there's actual provisions in the, the state statute that requires the annual reporting. Whether or not everyone's doing it is another question, but there is, it does say right along with the affirmative for housing marketing and the maximum sales calculations, there's another bullet point that says your administrator agrees to, um, provide annual reporting.
And if an eight-thirty-G were approved with a stipulation that a qualified review, uh, agency or, or, or effort is made and it shows that, uh, it's not truly affordable, where's the enforcement? What happens next?
Well, that's something for you all to discuss. I mean, I can have, you know, I have some suggestions on that and what we do.
We'll get into that part of it.
Yeah.
That's the seven o'clock show.
Seven o'clock, we start that, Bob. I just think it's kind of interesting that it's the town's responsibility to go through this, this project. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a big project and even a few of the property owners were, you know, they're asking me for, they're asking me for this and they're asking me for that. But I mean, that's what they're doing. But one question I have is how do you determine who's a qualified review agency? And you may not know that answer because all of this is somewhat new.
Right.
It's.
You can call, you can call other towns. You can give a list, you can ask for a list of references. Uh, a lot of towns use attorneys to do the review.
Can you come up with a list and say, these are the qualified people you can use, like a list of
I think it's.
I don't think you'd find one. I don't, I mean, I don't want it to limit to. Right, right. Yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I, I get, believe me, I get it because there are, there are times where I say, I can't do this. I can't take on another project. And I wish there were a ton of other people that did this, but there's so few people that do it. And that the fallback position is to go to the attorneys. Well, I mean, don't take this the wrong way, but attorneys charge a fortune, you know, and it's almost. And it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, it takes one, I don't know, at least, like I said, it could take two to three weeks to gather all the information. And if you want your attorney, those are hefty, hefty.
That's not the kind of thing lost usually.
Exactly.
Yeah. And to do it in-house, I mean, to have your zoning office.
You could never do it.
There's no way.
Right.
That's all you do.
Exactly.
Are you, are, is your business certified?
Yes.
I think it's so new in a lot of ways, the whole eight-thirty-G. I think a lot of towns don't know that they should be auditing and seeing what's going on. I mean, in Allonacy, I was a little surprised to kind of hear, oh, we should be doing this? And that's how this conversation all started with the convention. It's we permit it, we go through the affordable housing plan and then everybody goes on their way. And when I go, we have, you know, affordable opportunities, but affordable too, not because of the town, because of the state requirements. Affordable's really not affordable.
Anything else? Will you write the chair?
No, unless you want to hear, you want to hear war stories.
In the beginning, you commented how good Old Saybrook is doing, well, they qualify that.
Well, I think that you're proactive in doing these projects. A lot of towns. Well, I think that you're proactive in doing these projects. A lot of towns shy away from them. I know that Old Saybrook, because I've been involved in Ferry Crossing, I know how, um, how that project went, and the fact that the town was very, very welcoming. I know that I often get asked by, uh, different people in town to comment about the town's receptivity towards doing more affordable housing. And you guys have been great about it. I mean, look at the developments that you've allowed. And then the fact that you proactively said, we want to check to make sure that what we said people could do, and what we wanted them to do as far as keeping them affordable, that they are in fact doing it. I don't get that question a lot. Okay? I just get bawled when there's trouble. So, um, there was a town not too far from here, where there was a very large development, about two hundred condominiums. The developer did their, and a lot of developers will say, I'll do my own verification, and I'll run, I'll be my own administrator. Well, that's great, but you kind of, you gotta trust but verify. And then the developer went, uh, woke, left the development, and now they're trying to sell. And lo and behold, people can't sell, because they go to sell their unit, and there's a deed restriction. And they're calling the town, and they're saying to the town, well, what are you going to do? How do we do this? Well, you know, you, somebody's got to tell me, I don't know the sales price, and I don't know whatever. And then that's when the towns call all around, and they finally find me, and they say, hey, can you help us? So that I start working for towns where they're in that situation, when the first selectman is screaming, like, come help, we've got three people that want to sell, they can't sell, they don't know how to do this, and so, you guys are, you're not in that condition at all. You're really far ahead of the game, not only with your um, openness to having more affordable housing, understanding what affordable housing means to a community, that it's not letting those people into your community. I get a lot of that, and I always look at them and say, well, who are those people? You know, what, what are you talking about? Those people, those people are here. They work and live here, and they can barely afford it. I mean, I, when I was a kid, Old Saybrook was like the elite, you know, who could ever afford to live there. And it's true, but because of some of these programs, people can. It's an achievable goal, and people want to live in communities that have good schools, and that they have good services. I mean, you, I don't know if you know the development in Essex that we, uh, worked on, which is called Spencer's Corner, do you know that one? I mean, the, the people that live there, they're just so grateful for the opportunity to live in that kind of a community. And the people that are within the community, the teachers, the firefighters, the, the hairdresser that says, I can't afford to live in town, and then all of a sudden they can, because there's a development that has lower rents or a lower sales price. That really enhances your community.
Workforce housing.
Exactly. And that's what all of this is. All of these people, they have to be working in order to afford these rents, or afford, so it is all workforce housing, yeah. You know, and, and where do your landscapers go and live? I mean, you know, it just makes sense.
And, and that's an interesting point, because some of the enforcement, housing enforcement situations, we had one maybe ten years ago. And there were people living in padlock rooms and paying like six, seven hundred dollars a month for rent, or ridiculous amounts. Any room you could put a lock on, people were living in. And we ended up, we were able to get into the building, because there was a situation with the police department. And as we're going to the building, and, you know, through the, we knocked on doors, the building inspector and I, and go to the door, and there's a woman who works near restaurant in town. And now we go to the next door. And here's the gentleman who works at the convenience store. You know, the thing is, it's all familiar faces, and, and those are the folks, it's not, and bringing in people from other communities, it's people who are living you know, in these bad situations. And I was surprised, I was like, and one of the people said, please don't say anything. You know, I had an issue with my husband, I didn't have anywhere to go, you know, was embarrassed about it, and just, please be confidential, and I was kind of like, you know, and I left, and I was like, wow, these are people we all interact with.
They're all here. They're here already, and I see this everywhere. We have one of these in Westport, very, very affluent community. I see this there as well, and the closer you get to the New York border, the worse it is. So in Stanford, I mean, the situation we talk about, there's people, I used to see it up, um, in, in the New London area, when, um, the first, the casinos first came out. We were involved in a rez, a renovation of a building where they actually rented the units by the hours. So if people worked three shifts at the casino, for example, they would rent it for eight hours, so the, the people that weren't on that shift could sleep. Then when they went to work, the other people moved in, they slept for eight hours, and then another group. So they had three bedrooms, those three bedrooms would be rented out three times for eight-hour periods.
They call it hotbedded.
Yes, yeah. And it's a hot mess, and it's horrible. It's just horrible, so.
Well, Maria, we thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And your information. Um, we look forward to hearing more as we move forward. Um, there's not any other questions, we'll adjourn the special meeting to six o'clock. Um, at this time, it's six fifty-seven.